IT Planning Board meeting for May 16th to order. Let's go ahead and have a roll call, and we'll do it sequentially. I'll start with Meg.
Meg Fielding.
Sandy, present.
Larry Dukes, present.
Cynthia Wyman, present.
The absent members. Joe Lynch. Travis Day. And Natanya. Is that what you have?
Chairman, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to have the approval of the minutes from April 18th, 2022, or 2023, excuse me. Are there any changes or any questions about that? Or can I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for April meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments? All right, I think we have three items this evening. We have ZM 2023-0072, the Shops at Hanfield Phase III. We have ZM 2023-0075, Woodland Road. And the third item is ZM 2023-0076, Younts Road rezoning. Our staff is going to be presenting for the Shops at Hanfield.
Yep, we're right here. So, good evening, Board members, Chairman. My name is Jose Peña. I'm one of the planners for the town of Indian Trail. And so I'm going to be talking to you about the Shops at Hanfield, our first case for today. This is a conventional rezoning request. Let's first learn about, summarize what the request is, what's the intent, and identify the applicant. So, the rezoning request is to rezone parcel 07069001 from SF1, or residential, to GBD, commercial. This parcel is 4.5 acres. It's located on Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, a couple of hundred feet north of the intersection of Wesley Chapel Stouts Road and Old Monroe Road. It's located behind Publix Supermarket and across the Sun Valley Commons Shopping Center. And this parcel is currently vacant and wooded. And we're going to see an aerial map that will help us visualize its location of this parcel. Now, the intent of the applicant to rezone this is to develop Phase III of the Shops at Hanfield. A little bit of context about this shopping center or this village. When it was proposed back in 2015, only two phases were proposed. Phase I is about built out mostly. This phase includes its centerpiece, Publix Supermarket, but it also includes other businesses such as restaurants. We have Culvers in that phase and other businesses, personal services, such as a dance studio called We're Dancing. But then we have Phase II, which is currently under site plan review, and that's going to have a Sherwin-Williams paint store. But now we have Phase III, and that's in concept development. And so the applicant is beginning that process by seeking a rezoning of that property. And the applicant is MHG Holdings LLC, and we have the representative, Tom Crouch, from the Moser Group, who's here tonight, available for questions after the presentation. So now let's see an aerial view. It helps us see the proximity of the subject property to Sun Valley Commons, to the west. The Shops at Hanfield and the Publix there at the south. We can see also its proximity to the main intersection of Wesley Chapel Stouts Road and Old Monroe. To the north, in that yellow outline, that represents a development that's in construction right now. It's a multifamily residential project, Evoque at Indian Trail. It's 320 luxury apartments that will be there, so that's under construction. And that helps us get an idea of what's around the area. Next, we have a street view image. This is showing its current state, it's vacant and wooded. This is a view if you were traveling northeast on Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, heading towards Highway 74. And here we have a simple map view of the subject property and its surrounding properties. Now, let's move on to analysis and details. We're going to look at the adjacent properties, what we can note there, the comprehensive plan, and what recommendations it makes, and take a look at current and future development trends. So, when we look at the adjacent properties, we notice that neighboring properties are predominantly zoned commercial, general business district. We saw in the previous map, we have Evoque at Indian Trail, multifamily residential project, and that's under construction. But then we also, northeast of the subject property, we have a few low-density residential properties zoned SF1. When we look at the comprehensive plan, the future land use map recommends mixed use as the appropriate future land use for the subject property. And the GBD, which is a target rezoning district, is, fits well with that description. The parcel is also located within the subregional activity center, specifically the Sun Valley Activity Center. And these activity centers are envisioned as shopping and entertainment districts or centers. And so, again, GBD fits well with the intent of the activity center. And finally, when we look at current and future development trends, we are noticing in that area that commercial developments are increasing. For example, recently, we've had Wendy's complete its construction. We have Slim Chickens, which is under construction. They're part of Phase II, or Phase I. And also, as I mentioned before, Phase II has a site plan currently under review. And also, we've started to see, next to Harris Teeter, that they're clearing trees to make way to, for a new Harris Teeter fuel center. So, there's a lot of activity going on in that activity center. We have that multifamily apartment development that's under construction, and so these are high-intensity land uses that are, that we're seeing growing in that area. But what about the single-family residential that's near there? Well, we're noticing that those uses are no longer attractive in that area due to these higher-intensity uses moving in. As a matter of fact, when we look at the property, residential property adjacent to our subject property, well, that property is currently for sale. So, we're starting to see that trend. Therefore, the proposed rezoning to GBD is reasonable and consistent. Here, we can see an existing zoning map, and it helps us understand the surrounding zonings. We can see all that blue is, is general business district. The subject property, if approved for the rezoning, would simply extend and match what's in the area. And here we have a future land use map. Everything that you see in the light-red color represents mixed use. The recommended land use in these areas, in these parcels, is mixed use. And so we see that the subject property is designated as mixed use. And finally, we come to the consistency statement. This is more for Town Council when we present your recommendation. This proposed rezoning is reasonable and is in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of economic development and land use and housing. These goals are to create a more balanced tax base, to promote a diverse local economy, promote a variety of land uses, avoid potential land use conflicts, and encourage investment in the community. And we've come to the end of the presentation. These are the requested actions for the board. If you have any questions for staff, we're here to answer them. And Mr. Tom Crouch is here to answer questions, if you have any to.
All right, let's open it up for questions from the staff here. So, anyone have any questions to open us up with? I'll save my 43 for later.
I don't know. I think it makes a lot of sense. If you look at the properties that are along Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, they certainly seem to be less used for private homes, or the private homes that are there are not in good condition, or they even, they look abandoned. So, I'm thinking that maybe the property is already for sale. And I would certainly rather see property developed, rather than see eyesores along that very well-traveled road.
I think based on staff's recommendation, it does appear to be reasonable and acceptable and the best use of that property. So, if, do you have any questions, Larry? I was going to make a motion to approve it.
I have some questions.
I thought you might.
I've noticed the, I noticed a creek runs through there, and is any of that in a floodplain or anywhere close to a flood zone?
That certainly will be analyzed when they reach site plan review.
Right.
At this point, the applicant hasn't shown us, you know, those plans where that's been analyzed.
Okay, and it will come before us again before anything's built there?
Oh, yes.
I was concerned about the traffic, and it will not?
So, once the property is zoned commercial, they will be able to do any of the permitted uses by right. From what they're presenting, they will fall within a permitted use. They'll go before staff administratively for site plan approval, but a traffic impact analysis could still potentially be required in road improvements.
Well, I was concerned about an additional driveway on Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, but if they can utilize that traffic signal, I'm sure that they'll do that.
They will. There will not be an additional access point.
Okay.
I was going to say exactly what she said.
Smart man.
So, can we go to the site plan again, please, for that discussion we just had about using of the existing street light for coming out onto Wesley Chapel?
Well, in this presentation, I didn't include the concept plan.
Okay.
And I did that because the concept plan is really not required in conventional rezoning requests. The applicant provided it as a courtesy, just as an extra, but really, it's not part of the consideration here. This is just a rezoning of the property.
Okay, and I understand this is rezoning, but from that standpoint, like Randy just said, once this is approved, that they will be able, by right, be able to build whatever according to that zoning approval?
Yes.
So, from a flow, from a traffic flow, are we saying that any of that traffic that would come out from whatever is built there will come out through that traffic light from the Publix?
The concept plan that the applicant provided does show it that way. The traffic would be flowing into that existing drive aisle that's using the traffic light. But if the rezoning is approved and the applicant comes again with a site plan, that's when we start assessing their access and evaluating and making sure that they comply with all the proper zoning regulations, and that is included, looking at how they have access to Wesley Chapel Stouts Road.
Do you have any questions?
None at all.
Okay. Does Mr. Crouch have anything that he would like to say or answer?
Good evening, Board. My name is Tom Crouch. I'm representing the applicant here. Thank you for allowing the staff to, great job presenting. And I would just say one thing to your question. There is a drive cut in, in the Publix drive aisle already, and that is the one we'd be utilizing. So, not trying to access off Wesley Chapel Stouts Road.
So, can you highlight for me, just, and I think Jennifer did a really nice job and Crystal about providing kind of a breakout of the zoning, what can be there. What would you envision? What's the concept at this point? I know we're not talking about anything that's final, but what are some of the ideas that might be built there, from that zoning approval that you're requesting?
We're really looking to do a Chick-fil-A there.
A what?
A Chick-fil-A.
A Chick-fil-A.
Yes, sir.
It's my favorite restaurant, so.
Glad to hear it. It is mine, too.
Okay. Thank you for your candid answer on that.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Crouch. Is there any, anybody that has signed up to speak?
No, Chairman.
Okay. So, there's no public comments for this evening. I guess we don't have to close the public comments. So, I'll go ahead and take a recommendation for either recommend approval or recommend denial.
I recommend approval of zoning map amendment petition ZM 2023-0072 regarding Phase III of the Shops at Hanfield.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that was unanimous. Is that correct?
Sorry, I'm leaning forward, he can't see you.
All right, thank you. Let's do the second item. All right, the second item is project number ZM 2023-0075, the Woodland Road rezoning request. And who's our staff member presenting?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. We're gonna just take turns and confuse you as to who's going to present tonight. I also would like to say that, just by coincidence, all three of these are zoning map amendments. And I know that normally, you're used to CZs, and you get to dig in on all the details, and I apologize, but you don't get to do that as much tonight, so. But we are considering 112 Woodland rezoning. So, a little bit about the request. This is one parcel currently SF1 and proposed to go to GBD, which is general business district. This is 0.3 acre parcel. This is just off of Woodland Road. If you're familiar with Chestnut and Old Monroe, it's fairly close to that area. On this site is a residential structure that was converted to a daycare that operated for quite a while out of that location. And the intent is to request this rezoning for a construction office to be operated at this location. I do want to disclose that there's an active code enforcement case. The office did go ahead and move in prior to this rezoning request, so that is the reason for, before you tonight. The applicant is Stephen Bennett. Then here is the street view of the property. Aerial map. You can see the subject property. Here's the corner of Chestnut and Old Monroe, and then also Indian Trail Road and Old Monroe Road. And Woodland's just kind of a small residential area off of Old Monroe Road. You can see here, this is the SF1. It actually is a CZ SF1. If you remember, about two years ago, a lady came and rezoned it for Hope Montessori.
I was going to ask about that.
Yeah, so, we spent a lot of time with that project, DOT, the traffic, and then by the time she got her approval, there was huge inflation in construction materials, and so it was going to be over a million dollars to renovate. So, she decided to unfortunately go elsewhere. So, that CZ SF1 is still identified on that property, so we're changing that CZ and potentially to general business to accommodate the construction office. Future land use sets it out to be mixed use, so this sets up nicely for there to be existing residential and then closer to the intersection, commercial. So, just a little bit of the details. The neighboring property to the north is, was recently rezoned to GBD, and we're really seeing a lot of this trend in the area with Old Monroe widening and the super street. If you look back, this property right here is going to be a total take. So, when you really think about it, this is going to be sort of the frontage of the super street. So, that gives this rezoning a little bit even more justification. The property to the south is SF1. And again, the property to the east is that existing single-family that will be a total take by NC DOT. And then the property to the west is the Clover Senior Living. I think several of you were on the board when that project was approved. It is actively under construction. So, again, the comprehensive plan sets it out to be mixed use. This is going to be a future super street, and the surrounding properties, we feel like, will transition to commercial as well. It's reasonable and consistent. So, the consistency statement, this proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of economic development and land use and housing. And you can see each one of those goals that are listed before you, as well as in your packet. Applicant is here tonight if there are any questions. He does not have a formal presentation, and then staff is available as well. Thank you.
Questions?
Nope.
Well, the only question I have is, or concern is, I know some of those residents out there probably built and moved out there expecting the quiet, quaint little neighborhood, and it is a very nice little street back off the beaten path of Old Charlotte Highway, by all means. But I didn't know what that long-range plan is out there because, I mean, some people plan to live their rest of their life, and I know selling a property and making a large sum of money is a great idea, is a goal of some people, too, but I just need to find a fine line in between those two.
Right, right. No, that's a very good point. And we spoke, I've spoke with a couple of the residents out there, one that has fairly new construction, one that purchased some land about three years ago with the intent of building their forever home. They're actually looking at selling the land now. Part of the problem is, is that it really is an odd mix-up. You've got a beautiful new construction home, and then across the street, you've got several rental properties that are older and not as well-maintained. So, I think at least those properties closer to Old Monroe will be commercial, but deeper down in, it doesn't make sense, you know, unless that road was improved. But yeah, I understand your point. We did not, as far as I know, we did not get any calls from any of the residents opposing this request. I think they actually are kind of happy that it's not going to be a daycare or school with a lot of traffic in and out.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Randy, is there an existing structure on that house, on that lot next to it, on Monroe Road?
Yes, and there's actually an accessory structure and then a primary structure.
So, when Old Monroe is expanded, as I see the stakes going in there, it looks like that existing property that we're not talking about, looks like about half of that will be taken. Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so I would think that would impact anybody that's looking at that. What will it be after the Monroe Road extension, super road is completed?
Very limited. It'll be a very, very small lot. The structure will be gone.
Yeah.
It'll be very challenging to develop anything.
Okay. Cynthia, anything? Everybody good on questions? All right. And you said we didn't have any public comments on this one either?
That is correct. No public comments.
No public comments, okay. All right, so, had no public comments. Go ahead and ask for a recommendation of either approval or denial. Who would like to make a motion?
Okay, I recommend approval of zoning map amendment petition ZM 2023-0075 regarding 112 Woodland Road rezoning.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comments? Okay. All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it brings us to our third item this evening. Project number ZM 2023-0076, Younts Road. And I'm just guessing the title, this might be yours?
I am the lucky last person.
Good evening. Now, we save the best for last, Tyler.
So, thank you all for having us tonight. As discussed, this is ZM 2023-0076, Younts Road rezoning. It's a conventional rezoning request as well. As such, there's no concept plan associated with it. A few highlights. The request is to rezone 10 parcels. I'll let you all read all of those, from SF1, which is single-family, low-density, to GBD, which is general business district, the same as the other two cases. It's a 2.87 acre parcel assemblage located along Younts Road, Brown Lane, and Manus Drive. It's across the intersection from Union Preparatory Academy. Most of the parcels are currently vacant and are partially wooded. One of the parcels has a single-family detached home on it, which I believe is a rental. And the intent of the request is to rezone for potential business development of the parcel assemblage, and the applicant is Rainy Days LLC with Cameron Helms. Here's a street view of the existing structure at 2401 Younts Road. This is looking towards the south, towards Brown Lane. This is looking across the street from the existing structure, looking east at Younts and Brown Lane intersection. You can see across the street the front portion of Union Prep Academy. This is looking to the northeast along Brown Lane and Manus Drive. So, looking to the right is Brown Lane, and looking to the left is Manus Drive, which they're both unimproved. Manus Drive doesn't even connect all the way through, even though it's plotted right-of-way. This is looking northwest along Younts Road towards Indian Trail Fairview Road. And you can see several of the parcels that are either vacant or partially wooded on the left side. Here's the existing aerial map. I might get you all to look at the screen as I use the PowerPoint laser. You can see Union Prep Academy right in this area. You can see the parcel assemblage highlighted in yellow. You can see some development that's occurring in this area just to the west, and that ties in with Metroline Christian Academy, which is also First Baptist Church of Indian Trail. One thing that's not shown, or you can only see a portion of, is this row of parcels extending all the way down is actually part of Metroline Christian Academy's site plan for a soccer field. So, that soccer field was approved. It was a by-right development and is currently under construction right now. So, even though there are a lot of plotted lots adjacent to it, the ones on the west side along Manus Drive and Brown Lane are being developed currently. As you can see, based on the existing zoning map, most of the area is zoned as SF1, which is single-family, low-density. Both Union Prep Academy as well as Metroline Christian Academy, even though they're institutional uses, they're allowed in almost all zoning districts. So, there's still active development that is occurring that's more intensive than just low-density, single-family. You can also see adjacent to Union Prep Academy is a parcel-zoned, conditional zoning GBD. And that's the Putt-Putt Miniature Golf, a place just down the street, Trails Dynasty. And as you go up towards Indian Trail Fairview Road, the frontage along there is starting to shift from single-family, low-density to light industrial and general business district. The future land use map shows a mixture in the area. Like I said, the school properties that are institutional are still showing up as low-density, even though they're operating at a much higher use than that. You also see where Rosemary Park is split in half by low-density development, as well as medium-density. And you have some mixed use, as well as commercial, as you go down towards Walmart. Analysis and details. From the adjacent properties, neighboring properties to the north and the south are zoned SF1 and are predominantly either vacant or single-family detached homes. Properties to the east are zoned SF1 with an existing use as institutional, which I pointed out as Union Prep Academy. And another, which is zoned CZ GBD, which is the Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf. And then properties to the west are zoned SF1 with an existing use as institutional, which as I showed you on the existing zoning map, is the future Metro Lina Christian Academy soccer field, as well as a track and field that are currently under construction. As far as the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan recommends low-density residential as an appropriate future land use. You'll see that I noted in the staff report, though, that there have been significant constraints as far as development in the Rosemary Park area. Part of that is due to very small lot sizes that are not able to meet current building setbacks. Typically, we try to work with homeowners that have purchased older lots in a plotted subdivision. And if there are setbacks that are shown on that plotted, recorded subdivision plot, then we try to honor those setbacks, as long as they're not too out of line with what we have. However, Rosemary Park had no setbacks shown on them. So, they have to adhere to our current building setbacks. Another issue that we've run into with the development of these lots is that there's currently not sewer that is run to them. There is water in the area that people have been able to tap into. But sewer is not there. I think it goes to the Union Prep Academy. And then it's further up along Indian Trail Fairview. As such, there's been issues with people who have tried to actually build within the current building setbacks. But the lots haven't been able to perk due to the soils. As such, we've run into several issues. And you can see even some of the lots in this assemblage have combined together in order to try and get the fill lines on their property in order to have a single-family dwelling. We've even had a couple cases that have come before, the Board of Adjustment even recently, where these constraints are still very prevalent. And they're trying to find ways to develop these lots. So, as such, planning staff believes the area needs to be further evaluated. A few years ago, there was the Small Area Plan for Seacrest Shortcut Road that just studied that area specifically and the existing constraints and how it tied into the expressway and Seacrest Shortcut Road. Staff believes we need to do a similar plan for Rosemary Park area due to the amount of one inquiries that we've received for potential development in the area, but then to the existing constraints based upon either lack of utilities or constraints with the soils. Also tied in with the comprehensive plan, the future transportation recommendation for Younts Road calls for Younts to be a four-lane Activity Center Boulevard. If y'all are like me, at first, you were wondering what that was. And I'll show you that on the next slide. Future development for the comprehensive plan, this is in the US 74 West Corridor. It's anticipated to be mixed-use walkable residential, as well as retail and office development, along with office and employment uses with supporting retail. Staff is under the belief that this proposed rezoning is reasonable and consistent.
So, Tyler, can I ask you a question? Interrupt you just for a minute?
Yes, sir.
So, again, we were very fortunate to have Jennifer and Crystal give us a zoning breakout. But with that, I'm still confused about the difference between MBD and GBD. It looks like on our chart here, from a density standpoint and from a minimum lot area per unit, they're both the same. What is the distinction there?
The biggest distinction is probably the allowed uses, permitted uses. So, as you go up from, you have CBD, which is our central business district, which is more downtown. But then you go MBD, which is neighborhood business, which is gonna be like an attorney's office or something of that nature, realtor office. Then general business district can be more intensive uses all the way up to like what you see at Sun Valley with a Chick-fil-A. But it would have to make sense in the area for them to even take a risk to develop it. And so, and then you go up to RBD, which is Regional Business District, which is what you see Walmart, Lowe's, everything. It's pretty much the Highway 74 corridor, which is gonna be your big box stores.
Great. Thank you. Very good explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question from a standpoint of the other lots, I think you were talking about that are not in the request here. I think they were neighboring lots that didn't perk and all. Does that have an effect on the rest of the land area that we're talking about? I mean, do they have to worry about perking? I mean, we're talking about a normal residential home versus a commercial. I understand the difference. But if it's not perking in those other lots, is that a problem for this lot in question?
Yeah, they would either have to, if the rezoning was approved, if they couldn't get sewer capacity there, then they would have to do some sort of septic with fill lines on a commercial level.
Okay. Good. Sorry to interrupt you.
You're good. You're good. I appreciate the questions.
So, I have a question. I remember, but maybe it's more development level. When in the beginning steps, a developer needs to go to Union County to make sure that there is enough water and, you know, all of the infrastructure and so forth. Is this, is this the next step after the rezoning?
Typically, yes, ma'am. So, they would...
So, they haven't really gone into that yet?
I think there's been initial discussions before they even purchased the lots to see what the sewer capacity issues were. I know there's been a little back and forth with Union County as far as whether or not there was gonna be the Interceptor Project, which would help give capacity in this area.
Sure.
And I think the latest, based on what Brandy has said with Union County meetings, was that the Interceptor Project was funded and that future capacity is going to be allocated in the area.
That's correct. Also, the applicant has, also has a Plan B. If he is not able to get some of that capacity that still exists in Cricket Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant as it's nearing capacity, there, he would likely just do one building in the meantime, and he can accommodate sewer. But Union County Public Works requires full construction documents before you actually get that, yes, you have sewer in hand. So, certainly, this is step one. And then they would move forward to that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Or I'll keep on going, and then I'll answer some more at the end. So, as I was stating, the future transportation calls out for four-lane mixed-use Activity Center Boulevard. You can see that on your screen. It's a mixture of vegetative median with two lanes on either side. Then along with curb and gutter, street trees, and a bike lane as well. And then sidewalk for pedestrians. And so, it's anticipated to resemble small town or suburban, urban village or town centers. Right now, Younts is currently marked as 35 miles per hour, which it would be intended to stay and accommodate up to 40,000 annual daily trips.
Is there a timeframe for that? Is that on the map of...
It's not on an approved project list as far as CIP or any transportation needs like that. But as part of the comprehensive plan and going through it, we identify areas that are currently either collectors that are dumping people off or cut-through streets that need to be widened and that are shifting over time.
Good.
And so, as I showed you, there are, pedestrians are accommodated through sidewalks. And there would be bicycle lanes as well that it calls out in the future transportation plans. As far as consistency is concerned, like I said, staff considers this a reasonable request, especially due to existing constraints in the area and the lack of being able to develop this pretty much since the subdivision's been plotted in the '60s. There's a reason the majority of those lots have remained vacant. And it's due to the existing constraints that I stated earlier. Staff believes it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in economic development by creating a more balanced tax base and promoting a diverse local economy that will support varied employment opportunities, as well as to, one of the items that we brought up, infrastructure goals, which is expanding and improving the public and private utilities such as water, sewer, stormwater, electric, natural gas, and communications infrastructure throughout the whole community. And so, the request to action is either to recommend approval or denial of zoning map amendment petition, ZM 2023-0076. Any questions?
I have a question. Did I hear you correctly that you said you have done a study on Younts Road between Indian Trail Fairview Road and Unionville Indian Trail Road? Has a study been done because to protect the people that live on there that, you know, bought and plan to live there the rest of their life? I mean, how is this gonna affect them? It's what I'm concerned about.
Yes, sir. No, a study hasn't been conducted at this time during this rezoning request. And even before it was brought up, it's already been brought to staff's attention that the area needs to be further reevaluated for what we call a Small Area Plan. And so, that would just evaluate just that specific area of Rosemary Park to determine what the best needs are for the area. Right now, Younts is a cut-through street, pretty much. There are a couple of single-family detached homes that are sprinkled along it. A majority of those have been due to a combination of several lots in order to get the lots to perk for them to build a single-family home. That's why other, either developers and/or the church have been able to purchase lots over time, simply because individual property owners haven't been able to do anything with it.
What about the houses on the end next to Walmart down there? I mean, there's several residents down that way. Larger tract of land. It's not part of Rosemary Park by any means. But still, there's, you know, I'm concerned about those people's rights down there, so...
Yeah, no, understood. I think at this time, we'll just have to see how things progress over time. A lot of this is initiated through economic drivers. So, at one point, it wasn't economically feasible to develop along Younts Road. I understand protecting property owners' rights. And as planning staff, that's one reason we have buffers, landscaping, and stuff like that to try and minimize the difference between uses. You don't see that as much with the school or the church due to the fact that it's allowed by right.
Right.
And there's different requirements for SF1, butted up to SF1 versus a general business district, which is a medium-intensity business zoning against the single-family home. Right now, we don't anticipate anything outside of the Younts Road corridor, if you could call it that. Switching over time, we believe there's still gonna be some aspect of residential in the Rosemary Park area. Just mainly not along Younts.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Matanya? Is the applicant here? Do they have anything they want to add, or no?
The applicant is here and available for questions, but does not have a formal presentation.
Okay. Any public comments?
Sir, none at this time.
Thank you. All right, so no public comments to close. So, go ahead and take a recommendation for a motion for approval or a motion for denial.
I'll make a motion that, ZM 2023-0076, Younts Road rezoning be approved.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 I think that's unanimous and approved. Motion's been carried. Is there any other new business that the staff has? All right, very good. Take a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. Be safe.
Thank you.